Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9 Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37 Verizon, FiOS, and livestream wctv.org. The meeting of the Board of Library Trustees will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 929-436-2866 and entering the meeting ID 858-0117-2034, then press pound and press pound again with the voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually may be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then pressing star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host Brad that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they entered the prompt. In the event, despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the library's website as soon as we are able. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's now 7:04 and I'm going to call the roll and I'm going to ask each person to respond if they are present. Okay, Mr. Daniel Hall.
Present.
Mr. James Lemay.
Present.
Is Eileen McDougal?
Present.
Mr. Jeff Nussbaum, that's me and I'm present. Ms. Kathleen Reynolds?
Here, present.
And Mr. Donald Pearson? Okay, Don is not here yet. And we also have, we also have our library director, Tina Stewart.
Here.
And we have Tina's administrative assistant, we have Gloria Cochran, and we also have Brad facilitating our Zoom meeting. Thank you, Brad. Okay, so I think we're ready to get started with our agenda. So we've had our call to order and roll call, and we are now on to approval of our minutes from February. And does everybody have the minutes in front of them? I don't know that I need to display them, but if there's a request that I display it, I could. All right, so I'll ask everybody, if you haven't already, to go ahead and review your And then when we vote, we're going to be voting by roll call. I have my minutes in front of me. See, a couple of you are still looking down, and I'm going to assume you're still going
I have a question, Jeff. This is Eileen. I don't know if I could. Brad, did you get to go to that meeting? Because it looks like it was during the cancellation time.
Computers and libraries?
Yeah.
It was postponed indefinitely, so no.
But Tina, you got to go to yours or was yours canceled, postponed too?
No, we went to a Public Library Association Conference in Nashville and we just missed, we just got back in time before Nashville was hit with a tornado. The following Tuesday, got back on Saturday, I think, and then there was a tornado hit Nashville, and then the coronavirus hit the world. Yeah, so we were able to go.
Thanks.
Does anybody need any more time to go through the minutes? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or wait, is there any discussion on the minutes or corrections? Any discussion or correction on the minutes? Kathleen, if you're speaking.
I just unmuted myself, sorry. So I noticed just in reviewing the minutes, there were some things allocated in the park and a couple of other things. So what happens to all of those events and the funds allocated to them?
So if I may, why don't we go through the minutes of the meeting? And I had some of the same questions, and maybe Tina will fill us in on some of those details afterwards. Any other questions or corrections on the minutes? Okay, so I have not heard any corrections on the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as distributed?
I make a motion to... I second Eileen's motion.
So Eileen has made a motion to accept the minutes. Kathleen has seconded. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so hearing no discussion, so let's have a roll call vote. So Dan, how do you vote?
I vote to accept the minutes.
Eileen?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, Jim?
Yes, approved.
Kathleen?
I vote to accept the minutes.
And Jeff also votes yes. The vote is unanimous, five to zero, and Don is not here. Motion passes. Thank you. Going back to my agenda. There's my agenda. Okay, we are on to the financial reports. And I'll say that I have not had a chance to look at this, so I'm looking at it now
So March was basically a half a month, Tina?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So the number of days open for March was...
Oh, but to the public, yes. We... Twelve. Yeah, you're looking at the, are you looking at the statistics, not the financials?
I opened up the circulation by mistake and yes.
Yeah, okay.
Tina and all you are years doing what you do. Have you ever seen such a strange column in that March?
No, never. Again, are you looking at the statistics or the financial report?
Yeah. Hold on one second.
Both, yeah. Yeah, both. Just as some comments on the financial report, we had stopped all deliveries of, from our vendors for books, so we kind of haven't been ordering because of not being able to receive deliveries. But we have expanded our digital offering, so we've added $11,000 to Overdrive to increase our ebook and audiobook and digital resources. In $1,000, we just added, it's a total of $11,000,000 of that is going towards children's titles. We recently added that. Expanded our hoopla monthly allowance from 10 to 15, which is a pay per use. We purchased a database called Create a Bug for $1,000. It's an online resource that includes all kinds of classes on arts and crafts. So a lot of our materials funding has been going to digital resources. We'll be receiving deliveries coming, starting this week and next week, so we've, we'll start purchasing some more print material as we return back to the library.
So I was noticing, so some of the things on the budget report I was noticing, so training and conference, so there's a lot of money, well, $1,300 left. Office and library supplies, there's money left. Furnishing and equipment, there's money left. And maybe you could explain to us whether that's money that just you haven't gotten around to spending, or it's in the plan, or things are all changing?
I think the last one, things are all changing. So again, not be, we'll be, obviously weren't there to do a lot of orders and to receive orders, so everything was in sort of a holding pattern. And as you know, any money that is not expended will go back to the general fund and given certain circumstances, that's probably not a bad thing for the town, but we will buy what we need and be certainly judicious in our spending. But most of the furnishings and equipment money will probably be spent. We're going to be looking at a couple of things that we need to buy. But pretty much our contractual is all spent down because those are commitments. Again, we'll be spending some more books and materials money, both on digital and print, and we'll buy the supplies we need till the end of the fiscal year. We do have to, you know, wind down our spending by at least mid-June, and that's to close the fiscal year, and that's not a lot of time left.
Yeah. Yeah.
Tina, I'm sorry, just related to the spending, do you see any issues with the Massachusetts Library Guidelines in terms of percentage of budgets spent on collection?
It's interesting, I did email the Mass Board Library Commissioners. They have allowed us, because you know there's an hours also requirement, so before the libraries were sent home per the governor's advisory, everything before that will be accepted as meeting our state aid requirements, including the expenditure requirement. So as far as they're concerned, we have met it.
Okay, that's good news. I mean, they could put a bunch of libraries in tight spot.
Right, right.
Do you anticipate the town will let you roll over a lot of what isn't spent?
No, no, I anticipate it will all go back to the general fund.
General fund.
Other questions or discussion on the budget report?
Well, I guess I do have one question. We, I know we don't know when that construction project will be able to continue, but were the funds allocated for that, I mean, they're included in the current fiscal year, so what happens?
Are you talking about the sterile, the sterile project?
Yeah.
Oh, that's not municipal funds, that was Barbara Johnson funds.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, or not, those don't, that's not a matter of rollover, just like state aid. Any state aid money can, is rolled over, the Barbara Johnson money is there, it's only municipal, only the municipal funds.
Okay, thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, other questions or discussion on the budget report? How about on the library activity report, circulation report?
Wish you could put pent-up demand on there.
Yes, indeed.
Eileen, that would be definitely, probably a lot of yours.
No, me and everybody else.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Internet use in April, kind of low. But, you know, meanwhile, I guess I don't know, I haven't looked carefully enough, but I'm, I have to say, I'm a little overwhelmed with all of the library's virtual programs that are going on right now. Holy cow.
Oh, my God, I totally second that. Completely, completely. It's amazing. Amazing. So well done, Tina and your staff.
Yes, it's tremendous.
Every time I get an email from you, or I see something on Twitter, it's something new. It's never like, oh, I've already signed up for everything. It's like, oh my gosh, there's something new. And I forward it to my neighbors and my friends and my sister out in New Mexico, hey, is your library doing this? If not, you can do, you can join our library and do anything else, so it's just amazing.
In my reports, as we're talking about statistics, I did note that in April, we offered 23 virtual programs, seven children, 12 teenagers, and four adults. But those numbers, you know, certainly, we're feeling very comfortable with this new technology now, and have been expanding the virtual programs, and going forward, we'll probably be adding more as we go forward, because all the in-library programs have been canceled.
So you can track attendance at those too?
That's an interesting question. Yes, we can attract attendance for live programs, and we can report on our state aid, Irish Reports, all the live programs, but anything that's taped, like the Facebook Live, once it's taped, those are a little harder to track, and we can't, because they can be viewed anytime. Those are not considered, I mean, we count them for ourselves, because we've done them sort of into reporting as an activity to you, but for, for counting them in our statisticals, we report to the state, they only want to know the very live programs on Zoom and the attendance. It's just their way of counting programs.
Okay.
It's interesting in terms of the increase in, you know, hoopla and overdrive in terms of digital activity and...
Yeah.
Well, being double February and March being in the middle with basically half a month of attendance and half a month of online.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good to see that the patrons are utilizing digital resources that the library has available.
And you see where Tumble Books really took the cake. Thirty-one uses in February, 550 in March, and 426 in April.
Yeah, the other ones, I could do the math in my head where it doubled, that one.
Yeah, right, well, we'll have you do the percentage in your head, you're good at that job.
Yes. Other discussion on the circulation report? All right, so, so what this, what this means first of all is I have to figure out what Tumble Books is, because...
Oh, it's a children's book, yeah. Your girls are too old for that.
Okay. But am I too old? That's the question.
Yeah, no, yeah, right.
Okay. Gloria, remind me, do we, do we vote on this?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Is there any other comment on circulation? All right, is there a motion to approve the circulation and budget report?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry, that was Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, Dan moves. Jim, you second?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Okay, so we'll do the roll call vote again. So Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Dan votes yes. Eileen?
Yes.
Eileen votes yes. Jim?
Yes.
Jim votes yes. Kathleen? I didn't hear Kathleen.
Kathleen, you're muted.
Sorry, yes. I'm trying to get the bird out of the con...
Jeff votes yes, so that's unanimous, five to zero, motion carries. Thank you. Back to our agenda. All right, Tina, we're on to the director's report.
Okay, well, we talked a little bit already about virtual programming and how we have been expanding that, which we actually bought two Zoom accounts so that we can do simultaneous programs, a children's program and, and a meeting like this, or a children's program and an adult program at the same time. So we're, again, just into the so new world of programming. I know, Kathleen, you had asked about funding, what has happened. We are reaching out to the presenters who we have booked for in-house programs to see which of them are amenable to doing Zoom programmings, programming. Some are, some aren't, so we're still, you know, certainly expending money, but again, those funds at this point are Friends' fund, is money from the Friends account that we get for programming. So again, that money rolls over. We don't have to worry about not spending that and not having and losing it. So, so we're still having programming and we're still having some programming costs. And the, so the Friends are, we're using their, the funding that we get from them. Now, I did write a message from the director and noted in the newsletter that went out last Saturday that we have canceled all in-house programs for the foreseeable future, and we are including the, some of our big outdoor events, like the yard sale, Summer Bash, big trucks, you know, sort of the things that, you know, events that a lot of people attended. So those are also, and then also we had booked that Shakespeare in the Park, we just were notified by that theater company that they are canceling all of their programs, and wanted to know if we want to postpone them, postpone that event, so we'll, I think we're just going to wait and see until we reschedule that, perhaps next summer.
Tina, what happens to the $2,000 grant for that?
That's a, they, the company applied for that. We don't, we don't have that money, that's, they applied it and got funded, so it's really, really their call, and I think they would like to certainly come back and do a program because we would provide the balance of the money. So, and then the other big initiative that we had going was Wilmington's Earth Year. Again, some of those programs, a lot of them had to be canceled, but I wanted to acknowledge Barbara Robb, who really did a great job. If you looked at the website, she took the activities that could be translated for kids to do at home and did Wilmington's Earth Year, kind of listing with Beanstack, where they could register for programs and do things that are in their backyard, or, and sign a pledge, you know, to do activities that would improve the environment. And anybody can take the pledge, any of you can, and so take, I would, you know, encourage anyone to take a look at that web's, the library's website and go on that link. She did a really nice job pulling that together. And part of that Wilmington's Earth Year initiative, the Friends, again, did the, their 2019 annual appeal was to fund that whole initiative, and part of that was to buy the Fraser for seedlings. So Charlotte Wood and I went to the library on Earth Day and on Arbor Day and gave out all the 300 seedlings. Everybody, I guess I didn't know what to expect, but everyone was so appreciative and so thankful to get these seedlings. I think we had a, like a car every minute, it seemed, and it was, and then we ran out on Friday about, in about an hour, so we started giving them little notebooks that we were going to give out to, for our, our other program, the 2020 Reads, and we had, in the, in the program, the little notebooks where it had a little picture of the earth on and a pen, and so everybody was happy to take those. And I think there was actually a posting on Facebook with one of the, someone's young child writing in it, so everybody was happy that they, they got something if they didn't get a tree seedling. So, so we're trying to, again, think out of the box and you take our programming and reinvent it. So, so we're still doing the Wilmington's Earth Year, but a little differently. And the next thing, and again, the promotion of the digital resources, everything from a sign in front of the library with the website. We've also, I want to give credit to Brad and Danielle. They redesigned our homepage so that people don't have to do multiple clicks to get to these resources. It's very prominent now to see what we offer, and they could click on, you know, hoopla, and it's, it's very clear to, and to get to these resources. And in addition, what we've also been doing is gathering internet resources. I think people could get overwhelmed by the amount of information and that's out there, so we're sort of curating the best, and we've called the Gathered For You, so there's a link on that for adults, for teens, and for children. So they're really good resources that people can kind of click on and not have to weed through a lot of the, the internet to get some, some really good stuff. The, let's see, so the, and then the Friends of the Library update, I just wanted to let you know that, of course, you do know, the bookstore next door is closed, and that's, the bookstore is a big source of the Friends income, which funds our programs. So the Friends, we had an eBoard meeting last week and decided to move forward and, you know, send out a, their quarterly newsletter, excuse me, their quarterly newsletter, and use that newsletter to request membership renewal. So it was a little softer than just sending an email, please renew, and just asking people to renew if they can, and even if it's a lower level, because again, we're not getting that income from the bookstore right now. So you probably got that email, hopefully you're all members of Friends, you got that email today. They did a nice job with that email newsletter. And on Easter, Martha Stevenson and I, with help from our husbands, did our book giveaway on Easter Sunday. We, it kind of was a little short notice and we pulled it together, but again, people were really happy to get books. And then we did another one on the day before Mother's Day, and it was brisk, it was windy, we were, we had to tie down the book carts, but a lot of people came out. We had more of a week to kind of promote it, and, and we also collected about 12 bags of groceries for the food pantry. That was, that was really a nice event. So the Friends have not gone away, they're busy, and they're doing a lot of good stuff for us. The, I did want to mention a little bit about the status of the budget, just so you know that for the FY21 budget, the town manager has asked us to kind of review, there's a projection of about a 1.5 million shortfall, and so we're looking at where we can kind of cut, and we may not be able to fill the vacancy for the Assistant Librarian for Technology Services. Nothing's definite yet, I think he's just looking at, at numbers and trying to assess how to balance the budget, given, you know, sort of revenue shortfall and maybe not getting as much state aid as they had anticipated.
Is that the only change that's been discussed so far?
That, yes.
Not filling one position?
Well, he had asked us to look at positions that we could defer being filled for next year, if we can defer it, in that, since that's a vacancy, and we're not actively, you know, certainly open at this time, it's probably okay that, you know, we could probably do okay for the short term without that position, but hopefully it would be filled at some point in the future if it, if it's not filled in the fiscal year. If anything else, I hope goes through that we had asked for, because I think it still was a very, I'd say modest budget that, request, and so it's, I'm hoping that the rest of it will pass. Speaking of passing, there's a town meeting scheduled for Saturday, June 27th. Now, I know they are, since we have open town meeting, it can't be done in Zoom, I know representative town meeting can, but not open, so it's still scheduled to be held at the auditorium. I think there is a concern from the town accountant and the town manager that they will not get a quorum, and that would mean that we wouldn't get an appropriation if without a, certainly a town meeting. So they're looking at ways to perhaps do a one-month kind of slide, whether, come up with a budget that we could sort of budget to keep the things going for a month until they could reschedule a town meeting. Again, all sort of planning in case of, if we get the quorum and get the budget passed, we'll be able to move smoothly into fiscal '21. If not, it may be some adjustments that have to be made until such time there wouldn't be another town meeting scheduled. So hopefully we can get a quorum, so everybody come to the town meeting so we can get a quorum.
And your families.
Yes, yes, definitely.
All voters.
150 to start the meeting, and we don't have to...
We have a hard time getting a quorum in a good year, so...
I know, I know, I think that's why, in a good year. Oh, yeah. Oh, right, right. So that would be my encouraging you to please, please, please come. So that's my report. Any questions?
I have a question before we get into Rio, you know, the reopening plan, such as it's been made so far based on the governor's announcement yesterday. What's, so is everybody furloughed or only some people furloughed? And what's a day in the life, in your life and in the life of the building while the building itself is closed?
Are you talking about Wilmington's Earth Year? Are you talking about Wilmington Library?
Yeah.
Okay, no one has been furloughed. Everybody is, uh, everybody is, is, uh, being paid right now.
Are people working from home?
Yes, the, uh, the, when the, when the, um, governor or the town manager sent us everybody home, the, uh, all staff were given, I'll say homework assignments. So the difference is, is that some staff, um, like our circ staff, their functions were taken away. So we tried to give them homework assignments that they could, um, practice, uh, you know, go on webinars and, uh, other libraries' websites and, and polish up their skills and knowledge about libraries. My senior department heads, including people like Brad, Danielle, Charlotte, uh, Erin Driscoll, our Adult Services Librarian, uh, Brittany, uh, Tuttle, our, our Teen Services Librarian and Barbara, we've been meeting weekly and on Zoom. And all this planning, which I kind of went over with you, the virtual programming, the website, gathering the resources. Uh, uh, another thing that, you know, Brad has been issuing library cards online, answering tech questions. Uh, yeah, it's been busy, right? Busy for all of us, uh, for the, since we've been home. I'd say all of us in, that have a responsibility that can, we can work remotely. The, the circ staff, you know, their, their job, uh, there, I'll say their essential functions were kind of closed down. Closed. So we did give them all call homework assignments and we have asked them when they returned to work to kind of tell us what they have done and what they've learned. So, and we did a, I did one full staff meeting with them to check in. I'm doing another one this week to kind of give them an update before they all return to work.
And is everybody, uh, healthy?
Yes, everybody is healthy.
Good. And if, do you get to like turn, do you, I mean, there are deliveries. So there are no deliveries being made to the library at all? Does that mean like you, you turn out the lights, you turn the thermostat down and?
No, 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 no. So a couple of things, Gloria and I have been going in weekly to do payroll and bills. I pick up the mail at the post office in Woburn. So we've been doing that. Uh, also, uh, I, one of the next things I would, under new business, if you want, I can move on to the stairwell renovation. The, uh, uh, workers have been there, so the rooms are 99% done.
Oh, yay.
So that's been going on. And, uh, so, you know, there's been a lot of, you know, different activity and other staff have been kind of stopping. Charlotte and I have been going in, planning, doing the, the phase, doing the planning. I talk to Charlotte every day multiple times on the phone, but we've been meeting at the library also in the last couple of weeks, trying to come up with this, um, phased, uh, reopening plan. So, uh, she and I have also been going in and she and I are alternating days this week because we've started getting deliveries and we want to be there to get the deliveries. Uh, so it's been, uh, a sort of moving along, but I, I, and I do want to acknowledge certainly the, um, uh, all the staff that I mentioned have done an extremely good job, uh, just keeping all these services going. And, you know, buying, when we order digital resources, they have to be, uh, uh, ordered, they have to be paid for, we have to process, still have to process things. And just trying to think of things and how we could best, you know, serve the community during this time. So it's been a lot of thinking and a lot of discussing and a lot of figuring out. So we've been, um, and, you know, as you could see, there's more virtual programming going on now than, than when we left to go home in, in March. So everything is sort of, uh, moving along. So I would say that, you know, I do more, uh, and more emails. I mean, the, the emails are for me, I am getting a lot of information from area directors now on everyone's plan. So just keeping up with, with email responses with my department heads and with their other directors, um, it's, it's constant. And from the community, we also, Brad and I both have responded to questions from patrons. You know, uh, including you, Eileen.
What, what, what would you say is the most, uh, what are people, patrons calling the most about? Are they just asking, when are you going to open again?
Well, it's mainly emails. It's, no, no, nobody's asked that. Mainly people wanting to kind of figure out why their library card's not working.
Or why their Kindles are too old to get.
Yeah. So those, I think those are the typical questions that I've had. And, you know, just different, indifferent ones, like when, are you still doing the yard sale? Uh, you know, so, uh, some, uh, you know, easy questions to answer, but, uh, there were, you know, obviously, um, I get a lot of those. And if there are children's questions, I send them to Barbara. If there are tech questions, I send them to Brad. That's easy, forward.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if I may, um, I wanted to recognize Don Pearson, who has joined the meeting. Don, I want to add you to the roll call if you could unmute. Don's reaching for the button. Okay, so, is, uh, Don Pearson, are you here?
I am, I'm sorry to be late.
Okay, that's all right. Welcome, Don. Tina, sorry to interrupt.
I, I guess I can move on to just give you an update on the stairwell renovation. So, uh, yeah, so the workers have been on site, uh, which is great because they had the freedom to sort of make noise and dirt while we were not there. And the good news is, is that they're 99% done.
Wow.
The moved rooms are really pleased, they look really nice. It's hard to believe, there used to be a stairwell. And, uh, we're waiting, we have the furniture for the children's room ordered. And, uh, that will probably be a few weeks out. And the one thing they have to do is they have to do a railing for that big window as a protection. So, um, you know, uh, the, uh, it's not pushed on. And then we're going to be getting like a booth there as well. So that, um, that needs to be done. Uh, yeah, and, and, uh, there was a change order, which I did not, we didn't discuss under the, uh, but I could talk to you now, we didn't discuss that under the, um, financials. But there was a change order, I think I included it in my report to you a, a month ago, um, when we didn't meet for the HVAC. Uh, so that, uh, was about $43,961. Uh, it was a, a big chunk of change, but I'll tell you, if the air circulation and the AC is going to be terrific in those rooms and it's nice fresh air coming in and, um, on the, there'll be good, there'll be heat and AC in, in them. And so I think well worth it.
So originally had there not been heat and AC for those rooms?
Uh, I'm not sure, Eileen. I think there was something, but not to the, I think there was heat, but not AC. And I insisted that there be AC because the rooms were, uh, as you know, upstairs was hot. I think there was, uh, they had hoped to bring in the, the heat, uh, even though I, I, I mentioned it, but I think it kind of didn't get through the, uh, the original plan. So they, they did have to do a work, a change for, order on it.
That's a, that's a big change order.
It was very big, but I think at that point we were in the middle of the project and it was, um, I needed to, and we weren't meeting, so I needed to go to give a thumbs up so that we could finish it, finish the rooms.
So does, is there any accountability to, uh, our friend who, uh, Mr. Bar?
Probably not. I think at this point, we just move on.
Consider it retail therapy.
Yeah, yeah. And then there'll probably be another, um, at least, you know, $10,000 for furnish, for furnishings for both rooms. But the one thing I did want to talk to you about, uh, is our, uh, our thoughts for the first floor room and what we'd like to, I'd like to propose. The, uh, the, the, that room we were going to use just for tech help, but it's actually after looking at it and thinking about how, uh, that it really is suitable for a tech librarian's office, meaning Brad McKenna, because it is a really nice office space. It's not a really good meeting space. There's no visibility, uh, from the, um, from the first floor at all, to so to speak. So I, and we, um, the office that Brad is in now, the tech librarian is also two other library, two other workstations, two other. So it's three people in a very tight space. So this will give Brad, uh, you know, the, the space. And, uh, we had also had, um, the assistant tech librarian, uh, when that person is hired, would, would also share that office with the technology librarian, which is Brad. So that would really be like a tech librarian's office. Now, we had originally thought about that being sort of a tech help place, a meeting room. But I think that can be solved when we move forward with our, uh, remember when I talked about creating small meeting rooms on the, um, nonfiction side of the library? Um, I think we'd like to do that as our second phase of the renovation of the, the library. Uh, we had got, um, a proposal from one company. We want to, we're still kind of thinking about how to renovate that space. And if we put two, you know, uh, meeting rooms or study rooms on that side of the library, that would be a better place for a, a tech help session because to be honest, it's visible. And you see that the, the person doing the tech help, whether it's Brad, a volunteer or, or a teen, a, a teen bud, a tech buddy, and the, and the person being tutored, they're visible. And I think that is, um, probably a good idea. So we're working on that, uh, um, next, let me finish these rooms. We'll start to look at how to best use that space on the nonfiction side of the library to create enclosed meeting rooms slash study rooms where tech help can be done. And then we, what we've created is a tech librarian's office on the first floor. So I think that is the, the best use of that space. And it does relieve the congestion in one of the offices, uh, where we do our processing. It's really the processing office and, 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 and the tech librarian's office and all his, you know, peripherals and computers and kind of corner. So, um, I think this will be a, a better use of that space. And, uh, the second space will be again, used by the children's room. That will be a public space. It will be used for, uh, you know, parents and families in the morning and for teens, uh, as an alternative space for teens in the afternoon.
Do you have pictures available?
You know, I did take some.
I was gonna ask you that.
Yes, I, I did take some and I will send them to you.
Okay, great.
Um, so yeah, so I, I think at some point, you know, we'll, we'll be all done and we'll be able to next year, put that on the town meeting warrant to the Barbara Johnson rooms. I'm, I'm finished, Jeff, with that report.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or discussion on Tina's report?
Would, um, would the discussion of, uh, how it's going to work, how reopening is going to work come under new business or?
Yes, that's on the agenda under new business.
Okay, sorry, I have my agenda minimized, sorry about that.
I would like to just comment on Tina's report. Um, not just her report, but just the amazing job that you are all doing. Again, I know I said this earlier, but I'm just, I'm speechless. It's amazing how quickly you've turned things around and have just accommodated the entire community. Um, if they weren't already savvy about technology, they certainly will be when all this is over and you guys have played a big part in that. From a personal level, I can speak to the courts as well. They have just turned things around and things are just so much more efficient now. We hold hearings by phone and we will be holding them by Zoom. It's just so much better, not that I want that for the vibe, right? But, um, it turned around so quickly. So congratulations Tina and your staff, Brad, everybody. Just been amazing, Gloria, everybody. So thank you for all of the hard work and all of the extra hours I'm sure you're putting in and all your creativity. It's just been amazing to watch it unfold. So thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate your comments.
And during unprecedented time, there's never been anything like this. So, you know, you, it's not like you had a roadmap to follow. So I think that's all the more reason to add to, uh, to Kathleen's kudos, the fact that you could just pick it up with like no hesitation at all.
Right.
Yeah, it, it really is a new model of service. So even when, uh, we've come back to full service, it's not going to be the same. And so, um, it, it definitely, um, and, and all, you know, it's going to be different across the country, uh, of all libraries. And we were learning, we're also learning from each other, uh, you know, certainly what other libraries are doing and trying to net a new model, uh, figuring out how to, you know, and like you said, some, in some ways we're building it. In some cases, uh, businesses are building a better mousetrap. And, you know, uh, in, in coming up with better ways to provide service and maybe more efficiently. So hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll also learn well. I, I just as an aside, uh, Brad does a, a book club, I think in Arlington. And he said somebody who had moved, uh, to another state had joined in their book club. Uh, so, uh, we were thinking that, I, I know on the, um, the Zoom that you did for the, uh, Keith West, somebody who was vacay, who was up in, uh, New Hampshire, was able to join in on the discussion. So I think again, we're looking at, uh, people who retired to go, uh, from Florida can join in on a, a book discussion that they don't miss their hometown as much or just go down to Florida for the summer. Excuse me, not the summer, but winter. And can participate in the local library's events. So, uh, again, something good will come out of this, uh, sort of, um, ti- time period where we have to think, uh, think differently. So thinking differently, if you want, we can, we can go start the next part of the. You ready?
I guess I still have a, a couple of questions if I may.
Okay.
So, you know, you had talked about the, uh, the Friends and the, uh, and the bookstore and the bookstore being closed. And I guess I'm wondering what effect you think this is all going to have on the library? That is, a big source of the Friends fundraising is down. But on the other hand, some of the expensive programs that it might have paid for are no longer practical. So I don't know, what is, what's that meaning now for the library?
Um, the short answer is I don't know. But, uh, the, I guess it will depend on the expenses. I mean, we are paying presenters, uh, who we have hired to do some of the Zoom programming. Certainly we're not going to be expending the level of money that we had. So it may go a little further. Uh, but, uh, we, and in the town, we, in the FY21 budget, we did request $8,000 for programs. So hopefully that will pass. So especially, I think we need it even more if we don't have that income from the bookstore. So, uh, I think program we will go on, but it's going to go on a little differently, probably maybe, and certainly not as robust as, uh, we have done in the past. As you know, we, um, did a lot of programming, uh, I mean, for all departments. And, and we probably will not be doing that level of programming. So it may all work out. Uh, and we'll just do, you know, certainly watch, watch our, a budget and make sure that we can make it last.
PLA, um, have you, uh, given us, uh, any kind of update? I can't remember about PLA.
So long ago.
Other than the tornado.
I know, uh, I have notes and Charlotte has notes and I could include those, those notes probably be best in my next report to you. Cause I, right now, I can't, I can't recall what I even went to. It's just, it was, it was pre-COVID-19.
Yeah.
Uh, and some of those things we learned, we probably won't be im- implementing because some of them had to do with the, with the kinds of programming that, you know, uh, probably are not feasible right now. So I will attach notes though, in my next report, so that you could at least see the kinds of, uh, uh, workshops that we went to.
One of the things I was, was thinking of, actually I was, as I was looking through the circulation report and the, and the budget report, um, just thinking about, um, how you spend money throughout the year. And then you have this plan and, and now in the middle of the year, suddenly you have to go and make all new plans. And if, for example, you had spent all your money at the beginning of the year um, on, I don't know, let's call it books and didn't have extra money, maybe you could not have made that change to add more digital materials. So I guess I don't know where, where I'm headed with this, but, uh, other than, um, is it changing your thinking, um, toward future purchases? That, that you might not do as much purchases of this or that in advance? Does that give you more ability to be flexible later on?
No, I don't think we'll change the way we spend. The, uh, selectors are told to spend their money in a fashion where they're spending on a very regular basis. Uh, that allows our, our print material to come in on a regular basis. So people always, there's a nice turnover of new material. It doesn't create a backlog in our technical services where everything comes in all at once at, at, at the end of the year, because it hasn't been spent in a judicial, uh, regular manner. A lot, many of our, um, databases that we buy every year are, are sometimes we get a, uh, billed, uh, annually for those anyway. Uh, and Gloria would probably get better tell you which ones those are, but if, I don't even think it matters. But there, uh, we pay them as the, the bills come in. Uh, they are, uh, some, again, some that we, um, get, that we subscribe to. Uh, and then, so I, I would say there's not going to be any change in the way we spend our materials budget. I think it's, it's, uh, by the time we were winding down, we pretty much, um, have spent the majority of it. It's a moving target, uh, sometimes because some things are backordered, some things don't arrive, uh, they're canceled. So, um, it's sort of dicey towards the end of the year, um, because we're always making sure that we, we meet our 13% materials expenditure requirement in order to keep, continue to qualify for state aid. So we want to make sure that that is done. Um, but, uh, I have a wonderful admini- Um but uh I have a wonderful administrative assistant who keeps great records. He um makes sure that we are uh spending uh the money in in a very, you know, accurately, she, you know, her monthly reports. She watch, you know, uh watches the encumbrances, what's on order, what's due to come in. And towards the end of the uh year, she's doing that weekly for us so that we can keep watching it, making sure that the money is spent.
Any other questions for Tina on the director's report? Okay, thank you. Let's get back to the agenda. All right, so old business was the update on the stairwell, and I guess we've had that update. Anything else on that?
No, that's it, I'm sorry.
All right, then uh new business is the phased reopening plan of service?
Uh yes, okay, so in in developing, I sent you a uh what I'll call is draft three because we've been sort of uh updating and. Uh as this, as we found out new information, and as soon as I press send to you, the governor's guidelines came through. So anyway, uh fortunately, I was pleased that many of the things in his his um guidelines were are were in our plan. Uh so that's the good news. Uh there are some things that we're gonna have to again uh update in terms of um things that he had said. But I see, I do wanna acknowledge, you know, uh Charlotte Wood, she did yeoman's work in in helping me pull this together. You know, we read a number of plans from other libraries. Uh there is a lot of material and articles about, you know, time to quarantine books. Trying to digest a lot of information that is was coming at us in terms of sample plans. What other libraries in Massachusetts were doing and what other libraries across the country were doing to develop this plan, and she really. Helped digest all that in 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 bringing this plan uh to print. And um I really just became a more like an editor and uh and and she really did a lot of work on that, so I I really appreciate her. Diligence and hard work. Um the other thing is um. As I said, the governor's guidelines came out yesterday and I got an email from Mass Library Commissioners. That by midweek, that's which is like tomorrow and Thursday, they're going to be sending the guy, their guidelines based on the governor's guidelines. Um but the one thing in the in the governor's uh guidelines, he did mention libraries and I believe I sent you the link. And where it was in the section called when can my business reopen? And he mentions that libraries in phase one, uh May twenty fifth for curbside pickup and delivery only. May phase two, which we're not in yet, is browsing inside the library with restrictions. I think that was the only really mention of libraries in in his plan that uh we were able to to identify. Uh of not saying that all these uh safety and protocol guidelines apply, uh obviously to all businesses and. Uh municipalities which have, which are uh mentioned, certainly safety protocols in our plan. So um I'll just kind of go through some of the highlights of the plan. So we're, in phase one is what we're in now, the library uh closed to the public, starting on March sixteenth, staff were sent home. On March twenty fourth for the governor's stay-at-home advisory. So during that time is when we were doing, uh started promoting our digital resources. Began uh evaluating uh virtual programming and looking at our newsletter, our website and just really jumping into that. And staff were given, as I said earlier, assignments to do at home while they were um the stay-at-home advisory and they were working remotely. Uh we stopped accepting material returns on March sixteenth because of the uh. Again, not knowing how long the coronavirus uh was on materials, so that our book drops have been closed. Uh we canceled all the in-house programs during that time and that that those are some of the major service uh disruptions that had to stop. In order to kind of uh comply with the governor's advisory. Uh again, I mentioned deliveries were stopped and I Gloria and I were going in and doing the payroll and processing bills weekly. So now we're moving into the next phase, so the governor's stay-at-home advisory is lifted. The guidelines were announced and now we're waiting for MBLC, MBLC to provide their guidelines. Uh for the um next phase. And in this phase, um you know, uh library remains close to the public. Uh we're gonna be incorporating the uh Mass Board Library Commissioners guidelines and library staff return to the workplace. So and and then there's a whole laundry list in the plan of safety measures that we're going to be put in place, everything from, you know, the uh. Enhanced cleaning of the building, uh providing uh masks, PPEs and, you know, hand sanitizer. Guidelines for cleaning the the um the workspace in um everybody's own workspace, using this, not using the same telephone. A whole list of guidelines in terms of keeping the staff safe when they return to work. And the other highlight will be um the beginning of curbside service. Many library, and the other thing is I in term, and I just wanna say one more thing, in terms of developing this plan. Um I've been meeting with area library directors, uh I took, I last week I had a meeting with Tucksperry, Bill Ripa. Uh the uh who's Lowell in Burlington. And trying to work in concert with with all the libraries, so nobody jumps too far ahead. And uh with with the service and overwhelm one library, so um. Many of the libraries are rolling out now in the next few weeks a curbside service plan. Um the we can start it, you don't have to start it on, which is actually would be May twenty sixth, cause May twenty fifth is a holiday. But the governor's saying you you're allowed to do it then. And so many, some libraries are having staff come back first and then having materials returned first, started the curbside service on June first. I would say uh most libraries are rolling it out either next week, but a lot more are probably gonna be rolling it out in early June. At least I know Tucksperry and Burlington are waiting until I think early June. Again, these are all anticipated dates, um the um but everyone is starting to do that, so that's. That's the most important, I'd say, opening up a service to the public will be the curbside service as the first step. So our plan right now is to, the staff will return to work on the twenty sixth and I will, we'll begin our curbside service. Um yeah, and the details of that are, I don't know if you want me to go through it, we we have protocols and how we're gonna do it. It was gonna be an online form which people will be able to fill out and then we will call patrons after their um. Material is uh pulled for them and we will be wearing masks, be taking it to the car. Putting it in their trunk or leaving it by the back door and they would call us when they get to the library, I know. I'm just giving you sort of a a very s- snapshot of the details of of that plan, which will hopefully, you know, be able to do um next week. So that's where we are in that phase, before I move to the next, I don't, you know, this one has the most detail on it because it's coming up. Uh the phase two and when staff patrons are allowed in the building are gonna take a a again. Uh probably a a lot closer look in terms of how it's gonna be restricted access. And that we have to work out and how that's gonna work. Um it will, it could, we might be doing it by uh demographic, maybe uh we'll say families come in one day and uh maybe uh children. Uh rather, uh uh I'll say the older population, the high-risk demographic will be coming another day, that's one scenario. Another scenario is by appointment, uh so then we can track better, you know, sort of have more control. Uh and people at that point will won't be lingering in the library, it'll be just like picking up books, picking up um. Uh maybe browsing for a little while, you have a short term, but like long-term studying and in-house programs still in that next phase. Would not be in uh in phase, in that second phase, uh which the governor is calling phase two when with uh restricted access, so. That would be, and I think he's looking at maybe three to four weeks before before that phase is implemented. So in the meantime, we have two things to really do, we have to begin our curbside service. And then the following week, our plan is to begin uh receiving of books that are out in circulation. Uh we have about ten thousand books out in circulation right now and these, all these books have to come back, they have to be quarantined. So we think we will probably have one week of patrons with initials maybe A to M return their books, so we're not, again, overwhelmed, maybe the following week. Will do uh N to Z and have patrons return and they'll have to be taken to the conference room and be. And we've heard different things about quarantine time, everything from three days to one week. So we'll put them in terms of the time um they were rece- received in the book drop. And then after that, we'll be able to check them in and put them back into circulation, so that will probably happen in in June. Eileen?
I don't know if this is the time to ask questions or you want us to ask at when all the phases are complete.
Well, that's that's probably asked now because in the five, the next phase is like a really, uh it's too far ahead. To go into a a little bit more detail, cause that's just general uh in terms of um. Patron access, so it depends on what your question is, Eileen, I'll do my best.
Okay, so how do we, uh other than letting the books sit around? Is there any sterilization or UV light or a thing that we know of that's going to be done to de- quote, decontaminate?
No, from everything that we've read, and again, like I said, we've reading a lot about books and and uh how long the virus lives. The best disinfect is time. And uh uh for these, for the materials and the the question is how long and that's still. We're wait, we're hoping MBLC will will give us, but you know, if we err on the side of safety, we'd probably, we'd probably let them sit a week. Three days is, seems to be very common, uh but no, that, they said time is the best disinfect.
Okay, so um what about, I know you mentioned the books in circulation, um so. How will, how are, or maybe you don't know yet because of MBLC, but how will the hold system resume? Will it resume before the books in circulation come back?
Well, as you know, there's no delivery from other libraries right now.
Right, so how, so there has to be a backlog that's already there.
Yeah, they're, they have, they have books in the warehouse, we have books waiting to go back into delivery in the library. So uh at this point, you can put, like, we were actually had a discussion at our meeting this afternoon about the holds. You can still put a book on hold, so and it will, you could wait.
I know, but I have twenty-five books on hold.
When they flip the switch, they'll start coming.
So um but when they flip the switch, that's, okay, so. Let's say, I mean, most of my books come from outside of Wilmington, so let's just pretend it's Westford that. That that uh I have a hold on and it's not sitting in the warehouse yet. So if Westford decides it's not safe for them to uh to open in any way, shape or form for, you know. Longer than that, or maybe someone in the staff was sick or something like that. Like, I I just don't, I'm curious about the coordination for all, that seems to be massive and it's not a Wilmington issue. It's an MBLC issue. How are they gonna coordinate all of that?
Uh I I don't, I don't know if I can answer it because I think they're probably trying to figure it out, but they're pretty good at figuring those things out. Between, you know, Emma, a mass library system is the one who's in charge of delivery. And um again, if Westford is not going to send the book and another library has it, it just defaults to another library. Just be, you know what I mean, it's so, it's not, you didn't really put the book on hold at Westford unless they were the only ones who had a copy. You you put, you put a request on that title, so eventually um Andover. As we know, Andover is uh has a lot of books, so it's likely that Andover has that book in it in there, in fact, they. I think started their curbside service last week, Eileen, so you may wanna check that out.
So if, have you spoken to them to see how it works? Because did the, is there enough staff to do the curbside service? With them, I mean, they've got three floors of books, you know, we only have two, but or they have four floors.
I don't know how it's going since they started it, uh I think they probably are, I thi- like in any service you have, they probably have. Restrictions of some kind to me so that they can manage it. You know, uh so I'm not sure what those, but you know, I I'm sure that they are doing the best they can and filling what they can. They may some, they may put restrictions on the number of books that someone can request, uh so it it I think it will vary. Uh from library to library, so that it is a service that is manageable.
I'm just trying to mentally picture Ruth Allen standing by the desk, a phone rings, Ruth Allen jumps up, gets her sneakers on and go. Okay, I'm going out to the curb, do the, I I just trying to mentally.
Oh, oh, I, so, oh, we have it down to us, we'll we'll be, we'll be fine. Uh that, uh the first week, I think we might be a little busy and overwhelmed because people are, like you said, desperate for books, they want, they they're gonna wanna. Fill out the form and get a lot of books, but I think uh again, we will be able to, uh staff will come back, the work, their regular schedule. Will be able to sort of, uh and then our request is that they um, once that we fill the request. We will let them know their books are ready, they're gonna, we're gonna have them in a, we're gonna put them in a paper bag with their name on it. And when they arrive at the library parking lot, they will call the library. And we will come out and no patron contact, we'll put the books in the trunk of their car, or if it's raining, we'll put it under the overhang and they could come and get it. So there, again, I think we have, uh we were talking today, there may be some things, it's, we'll probably be in beta the first week. Until we work out the kinks in this, but I think our plan is pretty straightforward, um I think it's manageable and uh Andover. I, they have, again, their staff reflects the size of their library, so I'm sure that they have a way that they've figured it out uh to to provide their curbside service.
All right, well, I do, I do wanna volunteer in case you need additional runners.
Okay, Eileen, I I have your number. Number, I I and I might take you up on that or put you in touch with Anne St. Ange, but but definitely. Uh we will call you as needed when we need.
Next question is about the bookstore, so.
I mean, just before we move on from curbside service, can I, can I just ask about uh the hours that curbside service will be offered, is it gonna be? Uh part of the day in the afternoon?
Yeah, we had, again, we went back and forth on that, but assuming, you know, that our staff is going to be back on their normal work schedule, we'll probably do it until like around. Seven, start like at ten, so the staff has time to print out the requests and gather the books. But I would say uh we'll probably be doing it until like seven, which in then after it daylight, when you when daylight ends, you know, so that we could. Go to the cars when it's still light out, so I'm thinking till early evening, we will be doing it throughout the day. And then Monday through Saturday, we'll, we'll do it on Saturdays too, so.
And then the the state MBLC guidelines that are gonna come out, do you expect them to speak to curbside service? Uh protocols and guidelines?
Kind of, I kind of, I hope they do, I think it will help all of us kind of be consistent, cause I think that's important that all libraries. Uh 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 can be as consistent as they are and ha- and um when I had a meeting actually with the MBLC. Uh a couple of weeks ago and directors really expressed the need for guidelines from the MBLC to help us. Produce these plans so that we're all not making it up as we, you know, we're all, we're all, we all have to do a plan. And it would be helpful to have guidelines that we could all sort of move in the same, in the same direction. And it would help us, obviously, and then after that, it, a lot of it goes into individual town, cause your town is gonna. Governed by your um town manager and your board, your local board of health. You know, everything uh has to be, you have to have all, everything viewed by all the parties.
So would that review um possibly hold things up?
Uh it could, but I would hope not. I have sent a draft of our plan to the board of health already and the town manager. And I got some answers back from Shelley Newhouse, so it's moving along. Uh so the concept are, you know, at least the play, the initial draft has been reviewed.
Great, and what about the bookstore?
What was the question?
What's gonna happen, I mean, the the problem is the bookstore being so s- small and. And not a lot of room to maneuver around.
I guess that I would leave that to the, to the bookstore manager and the Friends Executive Board. There wasn't, uh the last e-board meeting, uh who's there? Uh Dawn was there, yeah. There was uh not, there wasn't any discussion as to when they would open. Uh and I think if, I think they can open, maybe they would limit the number of people that would could, would come in at one time. I mean, that would be uh my suggestion, again, maybe two people, one in one room and one in the other room or there's three.
Even as vo- even as volunteers, you don't, when you're working with someone, you are not six feet apart.
Exactly, so I guess they, I would suggest that they need to come up with their protocols. And uh make sure that they're following all the social distancing guidelines. Um so yes, that uh I don't know when they plan to reopen though.
You know, much of what you've said has been with regard to state guidelines and. Uh Board of Library Commissioner guidelines. Has the town offered any guidelines yet or requests or operating parameters or anything?
Not, no, I think most of the, um I think it's coming from us to them and they're reviewing our, our proposal. They, um I think since the governor's guidelines came out, uh my um correspondence with the assistant town manager today has been that they're. They're working on it based on the governor's guidelines and that we're meeting, we have a department heads meeting tomorrow. So I'll probably, we'll learn more what they have developed based on the governor's guidelines tomorrow. But uh to date, um you know, certainly, nothing, nothing I'd say precise uh to date. Uh I have all my questions that I've directed to the Shelley Newhouse Director Board of Health, she's very quick in answering. And I I I cover, I can, I answer everything, can we give out uh tree seed leaves, can we, the bookstore do the free books? You know, can I uh advertise free wifi in the back of the library, so everything that I've done, that's sort of, oh, I feel that, wow. So everything that I've done, that's sort of, I feel that, wow, it just could attract people to some, you know, to the, you know, picking up tree seedlings. So I've run everything by her and she's very quick to answer me uh about any of my questions, but. Most of the questions I've been, you know, certainly coming from me to her and then she answers me, so that's the way it's been working to date.
And then Tina, I guess my question related to the town support, is the town supplying PPE for staff?
Yes, yes.
And is there any temperature screening when employees enter the building?
That's another good question, because uh two other libraries that I spoke with are requiring it, I did email Shelley Newhouse that question. And she said at this time she's not requiring it.
I'll do that if you need a volunteer to take temperatures.
Oh boy, Eileen, you're gonna be, you must be really bored. Okay, anything to be near books, okay.
Tina, is there any discussion about the uh about the seniors? That is uh discussion about the nursing homes and assisted living facilities in town. Will will the library be providing any sort of, I don't know, delivery or or some sort of special service?
We have not discussed that at this point, I I have a feeling that even if we wanted to bring something, it would be very. Just, I I don't think they would allow it, I think given the situation, but we have not, we have not discussed that. What I would like the um. Board of trustees to do is to um ex, I don't know if it needs to be done in a vote or not, but to kind of um. I guess support, you know, vote to support the plan. And I knowing that it's going to evolve as we uh as as we get more information and is it updated, but sort of support the plan. And and following the guidelines from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And in working together with other MBLC libraries, because now we don't, the problem is, you know, we don't meet. Um another month, we have the open meeting law requirements, can't just, you know, talk to you uh. Unless we're in in an open meeting, so I just need to have to know that I have your support. And continuing to update this plan uh according to the guidelines. Uh from the Board of Library Commissioners and with uh uh information that we receive. Of uh from MBLC and also just learning, you know, more about the uh the safety protocols. Uh to keep patrons and and staff safe.
So Tina, can you suggest a motion?
I think I had something written down here that would be, let me just see.
Gloria is two squares over from you, so. I think you could probably reach.
Um I I guess asking for your support for the phased plan of service incorporating the guidelines for the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And working in concert with area libraries.
Okay, um do we have a motion? Eileen, do you want to make a motion or perhaps accept what Tina just said?
I would, and I would say that, you know, the motion should say that uh the Board of of Trustees supports. Um the decisions of the library director in concert with the town and the MBLC as far as. Uh the reopening process is concerned.
Okay, is there a second? That was Dan seconding. And uh Gloria, do you have a motion written down yet? Do you need a little time or help? Can't hear you yet.
No, I know, I'm gonna have to um defer to Tina's, I'll type that, what she just read. And then I'll add that, I mean, it's making a motion to accept for the Board of Trustees to support. The decisions of the library director in concert with the town in the MBLC guidelines.
Tina, w- will you be emailing what you have to Gloria?
I'll see her in two days.
Yes, 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 we're going to.
Okay, so we we have a motion, we have a second. Um is there a discussion, Eileen, like maybe I'll start with you if you need to?
Um no, I I'm all in favor of uh of supporting our very competent leadership.
Other discussion?
I I guess I'd like to raise the uh question about temperature screening. So I I know it's required, you know, at the White House in a number of countries, at hospitals. With the COVID cases going down, it seems like a inexpensive and prudent measure that. You know, the town could take to protect the, you know, the um employees and and patrons. Uh of the library, i- is that something that we can pursue modifying or or enhancing?
Uh I can't, that has to be from the Board of Health, Jim, uh I would not do that on my own. Because I think it would have to be across the board for uh the town hall employees as well. Everything comes from the Board of Health.
You're saying it'd be a town Board of Health decision?
Yes, I do, yeah, yes.
Well, could you, Tina, could you bring it up to her that the board was raised a concern about it and was? Would like to find out if that's a possibility.
Yeah, and I guess the question is, who's gonna take the temperature? I will tell her, Eileen volunteered.
I will, I will.
We have one, we have two chips too.
Question, I mean, so am I going, you know, they train the security guards to take temperatures?
Yep, okay, I will uh I'll bring that up at tomorrow's department head meeting, or I'll just bring it up to Shelley, but I I will pass it on.
They do have thermometers that track everybody's temperature too, so I mean, they're very highly technical these days, I'm sure Brad knows. Um I had a question about putting some of the onus to sanitize on the patrons. Is there a rule that you could put into place or a guideline that says for returning books, sanitize the books as best you can, wipe them down? I mean, I don't know what the protocol is gonna be at the library for quarantining, but. I guess if I were to borrow a book, I I might sanitize it before I bring it back, so.
Well, I'm not sure we, I'm not sure we would want you to sanitize it, because again, like I said, time is the best disinfect. And you know, wiping it down may not be best for the book, depending what kind of book you have. Uh could, you know, so. And I'm not sure we could rely on patrons to do that and trust that everybody did it in the raw matter, and since there is no process. In place to even recommend. But in following you, what you're suggesting uh in the library. We're going to put the onus on the patron, we're gonna have wipes, like for example, at the self computer. You know, which is high touch, you know, that's the other thing about, you know, libraries, everything is high touch. It's either you touch a book, you know, you touch a computer screen, touch a keyboard, so we're going to have. We're not gonna run around after patrons and, you know, sort of wipe down after someone leaves, because it's just impossible to to monitor that. So we will have sign, we'll have, gonna have signage. Uh up for people to know that there's a wipes right next to like the self-check, there'll be, there'll be wipes at the computer workstations. But when we're at that point, um letting patrons know that, you know, if you use this, use our wipes to do it before and after you you use the computer and. But it would be on the patron who wants to use that self-check station, that they would have some uh uh they use the wipes that we have available for them.
And I know this might be going backwards a couple of decades, but does it make sense to remove public ac- access to the computers to look up books? And just ask a reference librarian to do that, so there's less keyboards being used.
Uh yeah, that's a possibility uh to do as well. But uh we haven't gotten to that phase, but that, you know, certainly will probably be removing at least some of the public access computers. Uh well, it's not, although like the, yes, looking up the books, we can do that for them, that's that is true, but the public access computers are private use. So.
I didn't mean those.
Where we, people look up, yeah, that's a possibility, ask librarian, yeah, I mean, that's certainly legitimate.
Will there be a mask requirement once?
There's a state requirement now to wear a mask.
We're, okay, so it'll depend upon that then. If that's still in in.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
And Tina, I'm sorry, one more question, so. Uh in terms of the plan and reassignment of desks, so people aren't sitting within six feet of each other, have you identified where Charlotte and the children's librarian would be sitting?
Yes, we've been working on that as part of the plan, as you know, uh Gloria and my assistant director Charlotte share an office. Uh uh Gloria gets to say Charlotte is going somewhere. So Charlotte will be probably be using uh the banda room, probably as a temporary sta- uh workstation, Brad's gonna go to his, I'll quote new office. That would leave uh one person in his office and Aaron is going to go to where Kim used to sit, so we have. Yeah, we have a pretty good outline of where staff are going to go so that they can social distance.
Then the DPW will be installing Plexiglas before.
Public build, yes, I forgot to mention, public buildings will be putting in the uh at the at the public service desk, the the glass shield. Uh at those desks, yeah.
So, yes, sad new world, but regarding the open meeting law, so since we are not scheduled to have another meeting for another month. And it's, is it not legal for you to communicate with us via email or can you send us an email that says? We're emailing, I'm emailing to your town account, because a month with all this stuff going on is a long time to go without an update.
Just let me clarify, it's the discussion that has to be done in open meeting. So yes, we could email, you could email me individually.
But you'll, but I mean, I I hope you'll be sending us updates.
Oh, yes, yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
It's gonna be another whole month before.
I will email you an updated of this, because with the governor's guidelines are, I need to already kind of clean, do some changes in this, probably tomorrow. So um and after my meeting with the depart- with the manager and department heads and then the MBLC guideline, so when I have it, you'll be getting draft four. Uh so yes, so just to clarify, it's the, it's the, it's the discussion among you all that needs to be done in open meeting. I can uh email you information, uh but it's it's the uh but it's the discussion of uh eh within an email even. You can't start a discussion. Email, so just to be clear, but you can email me directly uh also, and I can answer you. Uh if you have a, if I said, if I email you the plan and you want to email me, just don't reply all, you know, just email me. And so then I will answer you directly.
And it's possible we could have another meeting. Before our next scheduled meeting, right, if necessary?
Yeah, you can have another. We just need to um notify the town clerk in the required time, which. If we meet on Tuesday, it has to be Thursday, is it forty eight hours, Gloria? So it's a forty eight hour of business days. Uh that you have to post, post the meeting.
Other discussion on the motion? Other questions for Tina on the motion? If there's no other discussion, then we will have our roll call vote. So. All in favor of the motion uh made by Eileen? That showed some general support for the plan that Tina had described. So we'll go around the room again, so Dan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Dan votes yes, Eileen, how do you vote? Eileen votes yes, Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim votes yes, Don?
Yes.
Don votes yes, Kathleen?
Yes.
Kathleen votes yes, and Jeff, I'm voting yes, so that's six to nothing unanimous, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um so we are on our last agenda item, which is public comment. Um Brad, do we have anybody who's been waiting for public comment?
Nope, nobody, just us.
So it's just us, so that means it will just be trustee comment. And uh why don't we uh go around the room, at least the way that I see the room in front of me? Um Dan, do you have uh any comments or speaking you want to have?
Um nothing super pressing, uh I guess I would just like to reiterate what's been said, that I'm very impressed by. Uh motions and actions that the library has taken, I think that it's exemplary and uh we should put librarians in charge of more things.
Seconded.
Yes, indeed, um Eileen?
No, I just want my library back.
Eileen, I want you to report back on Andover, when you go dashing up to Andover tomorrow or something.
I I, you know, I'm retired, I have nothing to do, that sounds like an activity and I don't have to get out of the car, so I can just kind of observe it.
Yes, let me know how it's working.
Okay, we'll do.
But you do, I have to, you probably have to go to their website to order your books first, you know, so check on the uh.
I'll go on their website and look at the process and then drop up there and see how it's working.
Okay, a good spy.
Jim?
Um I I guess I'll echo some of the same comments that I'm encouraged during this time of, you know, physical. Separation and and social distancing that the library had already been so invested in ahead of the game in terms of digital. Um services and online materials, but also during. The the shutdown process was able to pivot to expand their current office offerings to, you know, further service the the patrons and the community. Um so I think it's a, it's a great job in terms of being able to recognize, shift and refocus to deliver a service.
Thank you, Jim, Don, any comments?
Uh yeah, I I have the two rain barrels. In my garage. And I can bring both of them uh up to the uh Peggy Kane reading area if you'd like me to, is that okay to do?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I have the silver hose for the second.
I have it, I have it in my office.
Oh, you do? All right, so I'll bring what I do have, and then we can sort of negotiate how to get the.
Okay, yeah, I'll probably need your help, I guess, setting that's.
All right, so I'll do that in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Sure.
Kathleen?
Great to see everyone, hello, hello, oh, it's nice to be social.
You're back inside.
I I came back inside, I got cold out, my toes are cold. Anyway, um and I'm now a hoopla, just a hoopla. I just downloaded my first book, so I'm very excited about that, registered for all the programs that I could attend, so. Very, very pleased with the way you've handled things, uh Tina, Brad, Gloria, everybody, Charlotte, everybody that I know I'm not mentioning, but. Thank you again for keeping us all thriving and uh keeping the library thriving, well done.
Thank you, Kathleen, I have a few comments, I think I have too many comments. All right, so uh I'll I'll keep each one, each one brief. Um so my Amazon sales have been tremendous over the past two or three months. Uh I sold one during the meeting, you might have heard my phone go. Yeah, yeah, um I I have been very impressed with uh with Tina and the rest of the. Library staff on all the efforts they've put in, uh like the others have have mentioned. Kim and I were at the current affairs last night with Keith and uh that was very nice, that was a lot of fun. Educational. Winston Churchill is credited with saying, never let a good crisis go to waste. And I guess Tina, one of the things I'm wondering about, not not that I'm asking for answers tonight, but but I'm wondering. Uh if you're thinking about that or if you could think about that, you know, given the uh the challenges that we're facing now. Um it, are there new models of library service where this gives you the opportunity? To go and do things differently? And uh you know, whether that's, you know, changes for the future. Um and one of the things that that comes to mind, um so I. You've talked about how all of the uh all of the senior staff has been working so very, very hard. Um and then you you mentioned that some of the other staff, like the circulation staff, um hasn't had as much to do. And it it just made me wonder whether that becomes an opportunity.
Well, uh let me just clarify that, they're coming back on.
I understand.
They're gonna have a lot to do.
Right, right.
But I I think, but also, let me clarify that this was an opportunity for them. Which, don't forget, when they're on, they're on all the all the time, so this was an opportunity for them to sharpen their skills. So I'm hoping that they do use that, you know, we have, Charlotte came up with quite a laundry list. Of uh assignments, you know, there, we have some great uh webinars on a a site called Web Junction, it's just for librarians. There's um lots of uh, you know, things that they uh o- o- other resources that she's emailed them to take a look at. So um we're hoping that they use that, I mean, obviously. For the time we've gone, you know, you can't expect that they were, you know, it's not like an online class, but some of these are like an hour, two hour webinars that they could take. So um I'm hoping that they uh uh, you know, expect that they uh have done that and I know. They did have a homework assignment, then Charlotte meeting with them to see what they. And what they learned, so uh again, I think it's hard to, you know, when you take away a job function. So, uh, again, I think it's hard to, you know, when you take away a job function.
Sure.
Temporarily, that they, uh, th- their ability, their ability to work remotely wasn't the same as mine and, and the other staff. It just wasn't so. But they also opportunity to kind of do things, uh, they, and they also outtook their cybersecurity training, which is mandated by the state. They had an opportunity to do that, which I have to finish. We got a new assignment, which I have to do yet. But everybody did the first assignment and I was pleased that everybody in the library did it. And we all, I think we all passed with flying colors according to, to our tech head of IT for the town. So, uh, but those are the types of things I think you just thought, I just wanna just point out that they did have, uh, they were able to do some things that they probably a little harder to do when they're serving the public.
Okay, thank you. The, the, the last comment I had is the observation that all the offices are a little tight. No surprise, but as we start talking about, uh, reopening and distancing, I'm just, I'm sure that's gonna be a challenge. Uh, working, working that sort of thing out.
Yeah, don't forget the library is only fifteen thousand square feet. And, you know, we've had more staff now than when we had it built and we bought, we've, we've, we've kind of had to put people together a little bit more, but, uh, I'm confident we could figure it out.
All right. So that's all the, uh, the comment that I had. Um, so we're at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June sixteenth. And, uh, I'm presuming that's going to be another virtual meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so I hope everybody stays healthy. I hope everybody stays sane. It was, uh, very nice to see some, uh, I don't know, faces that we hadn't seen in a little while, even if only on Hollywood squares. And, uh, maybe now we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Don makes the motion?
I'll second.
Eileen seconds. Okay, so Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Eileen?
Yes.
Yes. Jim?
Yes.
Yes. Don?
Yes.
Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. It's unanimous. We are adjourned. Brad, thank you.